Good evening, everyone. It's now 6:00 p.m. on the November 7th. Regular council meeting will come to an end. For honor of veterans, I've asked retired U.S. Navy Captain Mike Zabel to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Captain?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please call the rule.
Councilmember Frank Baker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Matero.
Here.
Councilmember Roy Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jerry Shurley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Interim City Manager Kyle Riefler.
Here.
And City Attorney Betty Moore.
Present.
Thank you, Betty. Our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by President Matero. Do I have a second?
Second.
You by Mike Zabel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we move on to citizen comments. Any citizen would like to address the council topic not already on the agenda, please raise your hand and wait for your call. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. I see three people. A little spark from the left. Yes, ma'am.
Me?
Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Deborah DiCosimo, 105 Harbor Drive, and I am yielding my minutes to 10.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to yield their time? I guess. Sure, go ahead.
Wendy Gaddis, 309 22nd Street, and I am yielding my minutes to 10.
Ms. Lavenda.
I don't think I'll lean everyone's minutes, but it's nice to have them if I do. Good evening. Tammy Lavenda, 97 Harbor Drive. Tonight, we are officially very excited to be launching a newly formed 501(c)(3) public nonprofit, the Beller Beach Community Foundation. A small group of citizens, all volunteers, began meeting in May to start the process and begin planning. We have been working hand in hand with our interim city manager, Kyle Riefler, to ensure strong working relationship between the city and the foundation from the beginning. I'd like to introduce our board of directors. Again, I'm Tammy Lavenda. I'm the board chair. Our vice chair is Wendy Gaddis. Our secretary is Deborah DiCosimo. And our director of marketing is Nicole Sussman. Our mission is to foster a healthy, beautiful, and thriving environment through good works, community improvement projects, and social gatherings to enhance the lives of our residents. Funding for the foundation will be raised through donations, grants, and sponsorships. Some of our goals include charitable and environmental initiatives, memorials and dedication offerings, service projects, and volunteering opportunities to better our community. Possible 2023 projects are Christmas on Gulf Boulevard. An example of that would be lights or decorations on the utility poles, or the improvement and beautification of one of our parks. The BBCF will have a table at the November 19 chili cook-off with a 50/50 raffle, and we are also sponsoring a dessert table at the event to help cover our startup cost. We are also having a holiday food drag during the month of November for the local food bank. The boxes are near the doors at City Hall. Entry forms for the chili cook-off are on the table over to the left, and then you can buy your tickets from anybody on the parking record or at City Hall. We would love to have Beller Beach residents input and are open to suggestions. For more information, visit our website at bellerbeachcommunityfoundation.org. Contact anyone on the board with questions, and there are also flyers on the table with our information. We look forward to many years of the BBCF having a positive impact on our city. Thank you. And I'm open to any questions if anybody has.
Thank you, Ms. Lavenda. Normally, under citizen comments, we need to yield your back and forth, but in this case, the council may have questions just because it's a new foundation and this is a little bit different than just a normal conference. Any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
I would like to just commend you guys. Great job. I think it's great that you took initiative to start the program, and it's good to thank you guys. Thank you, everyone, too.
Other comments from the citizens? Yes?
Hi, my name is Nicole Sussman. I live at 90th Harbor Drive. I just wanted to get up here and let you guys know that the parking record has been working with the residents to hand out the surveys from the easement. I'll show everyone. We have them on the table, too. Everyone's supposed to hand them out by the ninth, so for some reason, if you didn't get one, they'll be up at City Hall and also on the table here if you want to just scan the QR code because we really want to get all the citizens' feedback and have everyone vote so that it's fair judgment on if we should do it or not. So if you have any questions, just reach out to the partnering board. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson.
John Anderson, 22nd Street. I know you don't take questions, but I'll pose it as one last meeting. You voted to appoint Kyle as the city manager, and yet tonight's meeting still shows him as being the interim city manager. Just making a point. And could we please have the vice mayor put the microphone in front of her when she speaks? I can't hear her in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let's move on to item number three, a proclamation for Veterans Day, November 11, 2022. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining our freedoms and way of life, and whereas tens of millions of Americans have served in the armed forces of the United States here in the past century, and whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives while serving in the armed forces here in the past century, and whereas our state is home to nearly 1.5 million veterans, and whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, in a duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others, and whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States was founded can never fail to inspire us, and whereas our veterans understand the important task before the American servicemen and women now keep in watch, and whereas all Floridians must strive to ensure that ours remains a land worthy of the great love our veterans have shown for it. Now, therefore, I then ask Mayor of the City of Beller Beach, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2022, as Veterans Day, in the City of Beller Beach, and I encourage all people in our city to acknowledge and honor the contributions of our veterans to the principles of democracy, individual freedom, and human rights. In witness whereof, I set my hand and seal of the City of Beller Beach to be affixed on the seventh day of November, 2022. Do you have a motion, Mr. Mayor, for this? Not for a proclamation. Thank you for everyone that served. I greatly appreciate it. Next, we're up to item number four. We have a law enforcement report from Sergeant McKnight with Pinellas County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. I have the September 2002 report for you tonight. For the first page of the report, the UCR property impersonal crimes, there was no reports of any crimes on this page. The second page.
Excuse me, sir. Which is highly, very highly unusual.
Usually, there's one or two.
Zero is awesome.
Exactly. For the second page is the arrest report. There were a total of four people arrested in Beller Beach during the month of September 2022 on seven different charges, and all four of those were traffic-related stops. The third page of the report is the deputy activity page. There were a total of 754 events in the City of Beller Beach during the month, and 879 deputies responded to those events. The final page is the crashing, citation, and analysis. There is two crashes for the month in Beller Beach and a combination of 195 citations and warnings issued in Beller Beach for the month of September. Any questions?
Counselor? Yeah, Mayor? Okay, I guess we're all kind of ruling to find out what happened in October with that massive Halloween party.
From what we found out.
Giving you a brief description, some, I mean, most of the people that we talked to have talked about, but some may not know what went on.
Sure, sure. So from what we found out, I believe the address was 1800 or 1880, Beller Shore. There's a juvenile high schooler that lives at that residence, and that person invited a few friends over. And like high school parties start, it starts small, and then other kids talk, especially on social media, which tends to blow things up very quickly. So then it ended up being around 200-some kids showed up for a party on the beach in their Halloween costumes, and that's what the problem was with all the party and everything else going on at the beach accesses and the side streets. Both Deputy Perez and I, on our present here tonight, were working that night, and we came up here with about three or four other deputies and did the best we could to quickly move the kids along and get them out of here.
I have a question. Were there any arrests or tickets?
There were some parking citations issued out there. The exact number, I do not know, because there were no arrests made.
Yes, sir.
I live on 20th Street, and first of all, I'd commend the response by the deputies and how they handled the situation. I actually got a call from a neighbor across the street and said, "Lord, do you see what's going on?" I said, "No, what's going on?" Went out on a forage, and there were literally, every side of my street was parked on, and hundreds of kids were walking like zombies, watching their phone. But it was an interesting situation to handle. Like I said, so the 19th Street parking area was completely packed, and that's where the first deputy went. And I won't give you all the details, but I thought the way that that deputy handled the initial wave that was coming through, and then like the deputy said, there were a few or four other cars that showed up, and I just thought it was handled extremely professionally, and they did a phenomenal job of being able to get rid of more than a couple of hundred weirdly dressed people walking around the street. So thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Sergeant. Appreciate it. Next up is code enforcement report.
Good evening, council staff and citizens of Beller Beach. Steve Clackford for the record. Again, if you look at the log that was submitted, had a very busy month, mainly worked a lot on some ordinances dealing with the weeds and the brush and the bushes. Myself and Kyle Riefler are working diligently with Commissioner Roberts on getting most of these problems resolved. Kyle and I spoke briefly before this meeting, and what we're going to do is we're going to go street by street, and we're going to start working on a lot of the complaints. We don't receive too many complaints as far as the weeds and brush are concerned, but we do notice a lot of, or I do notice a lot of the bushes that are over the foot mark. So we are going to be working on that very diligently and trying to get that resolved as quickly as possible. One other issue that we had last, or this past month was I had checked out on Third Street, lady was having some work done, unlicensed contractors, and basically they were stopped work and told her, "We're not giving you your money back. We're not going to finish the job." I ended up talking with the contractor. She got all of her money back. She got the key for materials that they were doing for the house, and they came to a nice agreement. So that was actually turned over to our Economic Crimes Division. They are investigating the construction company to see if there's any past practices that they've had problems with. So as that develops, I will keep you all informed. I had another case where a lady had put down $8,000, had work done, contractor never showed up, made one phone call, next day she had her $8,000 back, and again, that also went toward economic crimes, so there are of that. Other than that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Nice job. Yes, sir.
First of all, that is no pack on you. I bought it last month about 8:04 Harbor Drive, actually in our packet. I don't know if you got this. It was from CrimeScape, an evaluation of that tree. I can't direct you on these, city mag, you can do it anyhow, or the city mag, in my opinion, but is it?
I don't know. You can answer this question, Mr. Mayor, or maybe it's a city attorney. Is it proper to put a motion on the floor right now to invoke Section 22-31 under definitions of hazardous conditions and nuisances, and specifically with hazardous tree provisions in that? And how could that be go out and start studying that?
What I would like to do is to rank that question to the city attorney more because he's probably at a worse of a place.
No.
No?
No. That is not this body's job. You've passed the code. Separation of powers dictates that the executive branch, New York form, is the city manager and code enforcement sector. They are, they've clearly reviewed, they've done diligence, and however they choose to proceed is that the city commission does not direct whether, when, or in what manner code enforcement occurs beyond allocating resources to it and setting the policies that will be enforced.
Well, I don't have a city charter in front of me, but it's citizens, council, city manager.
That's my question, sir. We all serve at the pleasure of the citizens, and we serve your country.
And in my earlier reading of it, we can direct the city mag and council. We cannot direct any of the employees under the city manager. But we can give direction to the city manager and/or secretary. That's the way I read the charter. Am I incorrect there?
No, you certainly direct the city manager on a day-to-day basis. Your direction is to the city manager to enforce the city's code. The city manager is doing that, has done that, has confirmed with me. If this council so desires to involve itself in code enforcement in the manner of delineating when and in what manner particular code measures will be enforced, it may do so with all the attendant risks that come with involving yourself in that, in that scheme. I would say ordinarily, it is the province of the councils who say, "We have passed this code. We have tasked you with enforcing our code," and then that's a performance issue. But if I would counsel against the council organization involving itself in particular matters, and for a number of concerns that extend to protecting you folks, not just the ordinary separation of powers, but also protection as important to you in the city and your function.
I appreciate you protecting us, but in this letter, it cites about four or five homes for this cause of the catastrophe.
Okay, so. I don't believe you use the word catastrophe like the letter of the document.
Yeah, severe risk. All right. And I would be more, I'm more concerned with the citizens that live around that tree than I am with this council, maybe overstepping its boundaries a little bit, not giving it to code enforcement or the city mag. I really do believe a motion would be proper when you're telling me that.
Ultimately, this body conducts its business however it wishes. You're asking for my advice, and I give advice. You don't need to conduct yourselves in conforming with my advice at all times. Ultimately, that's, it's this body's design. This city moves by the will of the body, sir. You asked for my advice, and I've given it, and our perspectives may not always align, but I respect that I do in fact work for you folks, and whatever you folks direct out, we will.
Hopefully, this windstorm coming doesn't take this tree down, and this may go on and down for months. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask it to you. Any more discussion about this? If you've asked for his opinion, or if you asked for my opinion, I've asked him, and he gave you the information, and now we all have it to consider. With that being said, do we have any other comments?
Yeah, a question. We spoke about the economic crimes, you know. Is it possible that they have a list of contractors that do not meet the law that we can keep here at City Hall to, if anybody asks, we can't recommend contractors.
Right.
But I'm sure you will list the people that are operating illegally.
Right. If they go under the Pinellas County Construction Licensing Board website, there's a.
I think that's not easy for our people. I mean, is it possible to have a list here?
I would, I'd have to check. I would say no, because again, they would have to pull case numbers and stuff, but I will tell you that going under the licensing board website is very easy, and all you have to do is search contractor, put the contractor's name in there, and it comes up and tells you if they're active, inactive, suspended. I've showed a few people how to do that, but that would be the best place.
If possible, that would be, I guess, a listing up there to say, "Here's the website. If you have questions about your contractor, just go to this website and type in the name of the company."
Yeah, they can do that. I mean, it's very easy to do.
I'm just saying, for the citizens, you know, making it for them out of their.
I think that that would be an excellent topic to put on the next newsletter, just to get that lien out there so that everyone has it, and then, I mean, just let everybody in town just get their emails, and that's it. I think that would work. Do we have any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great evening. You, too.
All right. Speaking of the city attorney, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, one of the, to address a point that was raised earlier this evening, at the last meeting this body gave, authorized the city attorney's office to begin negotiating contract terms with Mr. Riefler. We had exchanged iterations of that contract. I had provided both the initial draft and revised draft to the council with a summary of those points. Again, I always, whenever I provide a summary, I just wish to reiterate, the source documents control the, the summary's there for your ease of reference, so you're not floundering in those situations. So that process remains ongoing. Ultimately, once the parties reach mutually agreeable terms, we will, Mr. Riefler would, presumably we reached mutually agreeable terms, Mr. Riefler will send that to the office of management on a full-time basis. As indicated in previous reports, I continue to remain in daily contact with Kyle and Abby on the radio matters. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer your questions you have.
Counselor? This time? All right. What I would like to do is, if we can wrap this up, maybe next month, this will end, and then for, I'm assuming you're getting feedback?
I've not received any feedback, and ultimately, from the, if you mean as it relates to the interim manager's contract to be manager, I've not received any one-on-one feedback, and since it will ultimately be a contract that the body will approve, it'd be best to have that feedback provided in a public hearing setting, so that way, if Member Zabel, for example, gives me a number, and you give me a number, just settles the easiest thing, then I'm not trying to reconcile conflicting things. I think that consensus, I don't wish to get a consensus outside of the meeting, so it's my understanding that there were talks at a workshop in the coming weeks, either next week or three weeks from now. I think there's supposed to be potentially three meetings this month. One of those would be it. That was when I briefly spoke to Kyle this morning, we were talking about what that timeline would look like ultimately versus at this body's discretion.
I think that next week would be a great time to just go ahead and add the agenda, and we see if we can hack through this and get it marked out so that we can vote to approve.
And to avoid any, you know, just confusion or the way that assumptions tend to fill the void, this wasn't rocket science in that, you know, you folks put a lot of thought into the contract as put for another candidate. Obviously, those terms were very specific to that candidate, but the mold was there. They were, you know, I shaped it based on present realities and anticipating comments. Obviously, Mr. Riefler framed it based upon his perspective as an employee, and also the difference being that he is an existing employee, and so, you know, somebody coming in may not have a current leave, for example, and how that is dealt with. And so those sorts of elements are in the draft, and those will be for you folks to consider. But I don't wish to give the impression that I've, you know, that this has been, you know, the owner's job or some incredibly difficult tasks, it's just time to ultimately get him being put in the body, and it can only be public.
Mr. Roberts?
I was just going to recommend at the next workshop, it would be worth your time.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Moore? Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Next up, interim city manager for the board, Mr. Riefler, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Start off the 12th, 13th of the day, from our project we have and agenda item tonight, possible change order to, up for approval by council. That still has a completion date in January at this point with the extensions it received for the hurricane delay. The Gulf Boulevard undergrounding project, we are still in the phase of going door-to-door to the houses that require reinforcements per Duke Energy. I put together, based on the information from utility consultants, for giving more information on all the projects, what stage we're in the project, what was involved, and a little bit about the easements that we're requesting. So I plan to put that on the website, just so maybe available for people to reference if they have questions on that project. These 7th Street renovation, some people have it, 60th Street seal renovation, we are more than halfway complete on that project. The, it still has a January completion date based on the time we gave for the project. I went ahead and started soliciting bids for the fishing dock, so hopefully, as soon as that seal is completed, we have that fishing dock pulled, rebuilt. So, you know, some residents are living for it at that time, I can give that a sense of retraction. The 17th and 18th Street Stormwater Project, I currently have a hold, and the reason for that is that we have a citizens advisory committee looking at possibly a bank loan to fund five of the projects all the time, putting together a report and proposal for council to consider, and we're just getting some more information on what the current loan rates are, what we're looking at for the project. The Code Enforcement Analysis Project, we just met on November 4th. We pulled in all our results for the survey. The team discussed, analyzed the results, we kind of came up with a game plan on how we want to address what we heard from the residents. residents. Uh, council member Roberts and I are gonna try to get something together, given on the, uh, November 14th work, work session, agenda, so that we can get some consensus from council on what our ideas are. And then our plan is to disseminate the information back to the residents, let them know what we, what we heard from them, what our plan is, and then, uh, go to follow-up, and then we talk to any area and hopefully, sir, to see what our results are based on what we did. The, um, City Hall generator, okay, recently touched base with the, uh, company that's giving me a sourceful quote, based on materials, labor costs, our, uh, project cost has increased. So, we budgeted, I believe it was two years ago, $240,000 for the project, and we're looking at a number, um, at $281,000, roughly. So, that's something, um, I know we've talked, we're talking about the improvements to emergency management, um, this kind of goes hand-in-hand with that, uh, costly, it gives feedback from council on if we want to spend money, if this is a part right to pursue or if we want to reconsider this kind of money, whether we can spend it in all their aspects of emergency management.
Do you think we should go back and re-quote?
We can, uh, we can go back and re-quote, we might go get something a little lower.
That's, that's-
Like, close to $40,000.
Yes.
Um, we did see it increase, back when we voted, this was kind of before, we saw a lot of increases, um, I can get some new fresh quotes, this company specifically looking a lot lower, I'm imagining they could highly just verify that, um, sometimes we get quotes so, um, but a sourceful quote, you know, that, that doesn't require us to go out the bid, if we go out the bid, sometimes they'll tell you one number and then the number's a lot higher than they're gonna say. So, just something to consider, I think, I can pull some more numbers for follow-up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Have we explored the body's hospitals, businesses that have generators, they will terminate them after a certain amount of years because of their insurance, that Caterpillar is a big generator company, they, they take them back, they rework them, they reguarantee them, and they warrantee for them. Uh, we looked at a used generator option, which would probably be about half this cost because I don't, I don't see the big need for here, I mean, there wasn't power, we never needed, but I mean, it's gonna work just as well as a new generator, we can say we have the money. What's, what's the issue?
My knowledge, we haven't looked at any, uh, you know, re-refurbish generators, but that's something I can ask you to the main vendors if they, if they knew or if they know another source to do that.
Yeah, because they're coming out of Caterpillar, tear them down, journal loop and, and do everything, you know, and there's, there, in my opinion, there's still this problem.
Long as they, uh, they go with our ticket, sure. So, it's what we'll make this money.
Okay. Um, City Hall seawall, I am getting, uh, budgetary number or quote from the current company that's doing their seawalls now to see where they come in, and then another company that is, uh, historically better priced. So, I'd like to make sure that our $30,000 that we have in the budget is adequate to pay for what we want to pay on that. Well, still waiting on that. Um, I reached out to you, uh, I believe like we can have a little bit about a, a filming request on Iviskas Avenue, um, got some feedback from council, the majority was okay with it, once we talked, uh, worked with the, the, uh, production request to get it to, uh, a minimal impact on the, uh, city traffic and, uh, the time that they impede each other in Iviskas. So, currently we're at stands, um, we have the whole production, the whole operation taking place in less than two hours, the actual film or shot that they're gonna do, it involves a, a person bicycling down the road, um, in a van, I, I give them the shots, also lasts a maximum of ninety seconds, so when they do it, they're just gonna do it straight out, get their footage and then be done with it. Uh, we asked that they, they originally requested, I think it was, I don't know if it sounds right, um, for parking in Belle Isle right away on the seawall, we got them to get down to two vans and a box truck and asked them to pull off the road so that there's less of traffic at all. They expressed concerns with the box truck, maybe tilted too much with the equipment, so then we agreed that they could grab their equipment and park the box truck in Marina, but they'll get vans off of the, uh, the road. Um, I spoke with them today, they, uh, they seemed like people that were going to communicate with all of our residents, they got put tags on the doors, I got one call from a resident just inquiring about what it was, as soon as I explained that they were okay with it. So, I'm hoping that, you know, this goes positive, um, so that we can sort of figure out some parameters to work with if we can get these requests in the future, um, so that we can support the whole company. Um, the, I handed out that tree, uh, assessment, I was able to get it completed by an independent, um, uh, arborist, he did it on Saturday, so I have the report, um, late this weekend. I just wanted to share that with you for you to, um, read this, what he, what he's writing with his, you know, make decisions on where he feels, um, you know, wherever we have it, I mean, there's, there's things we can discuss further, um, from, in talking with the arborist and how they, how they do it, um, I had to keep him off of the private party's, or property, so they had to, uh, do his assessment from the easement that runs next to the property, um, it's called a level one assessment, uh, that's about, you know, it can tell you some basic information about the tree that we did in Nusske's. Um, what I gathered was, um, it may be a rest of normal, or I believe you use the word, uh, moderate on the scale of low, moderate, high, extreme, so it'd be a one or two or four. Um, there's a somewhat likely, uh, uh, chance of failure, but that is, um, given the weather typical to this area, and then, um, when it, when it comes to hurricane-force winds, the, the take I got from them was that any tree in this area could potentially fail in hurricane-force winds, so that's kind of not something that they try to actually put a number to, um, you know, depending on ground situation and everything. So, it's, I wanted to get that report because we talked about having a report done by the city, it was, you know, completely independent of anything else you heard, um, I feel like you did a pretty thorough report, having to analyze it and then decide where I wanna go from there.
I, I think, I think it would be beneficial to the council just to receive, um, what's, what's next, what's, what's the procedure for any, any tree that's in this condition within the city limits? And, and if we, uh, if we, if you determine that we actually don't have a mechanism in place to deal with this, then the council needs to get the workarminia and come up with an ordinance that will address these, these problematic, um, trees. I, I, I don't wanna take on any one particular property or, or homeowner, but, um, if there's not something in place already, we definitely should have something to address this.
Right. And I, from talking with, uh, people who are cities that have more aggressive ordinances, um, to our city attorney, um, I currently don't believe we have enough, uh, to act based on what we can, what we can analyze from, uh, a drive-by survey of a tree and, you know, we can't go on a property, we really can't dive deep into like what they call the level three, uh, of, uh, analysis of a tree, um, if those are all really good, but, um, I think where we're at now, it's given involve a little bit more language in our code to, to accomplish what we may be, maybe accomplish.
This sounds like a, a perfect item to add to the next work session, okay? It's not a very real discuss. Questions for Mr. Reefer?
Yes, uh, under twenty-two thirty-one, Lazarus Tree shall mean any tree that is injured, terminally diseased, or dead, danger of falling or adjacent property, or any tree that interferes with utility services creates unsafe vision clearance or causes damage to the public directly. Um, there's utilities where that tree could fall on, there's at least three houses, maybe four, I don't know what, who we really need. And I'm reading right from, uh, Minnesota, Minnesota.
I think maybe on work session, we can compare on the city codes and, and sort of the language they use and steps that they take, so that maybe we could review our code and modify it to be something that might be more successful in accomplishing our goals.
I understand that, it's just, uh, the longer this waits, the more risk it is. Any other questions or comments for, for Mr. Reefer?
Yes, sir. Mr. Roberts? Yeah, I think, uh, Kyle, I think it's a great idea that the citizens advisory committee is gonna combine those multiple projects, um, for obvious reasons, it's gonna save the city money, um, clearly there's gonna be some interest involved, which is money we're gonna have to pay, but by, I'm confident by combining those five projects, A, we're gonna get more contractors bidding on it, which is always gonna save you money, it's more competitive. Um, I think it's a great benefit to the citizens because instead of cracking out the construction for months and months and years possibly, um, it will all be done, um, pretty much at one time, which is a great thing. Also getting it done under one contract, and instead of stretching it out, which is gonna increase costing as well, so, great idea. Um, my question is off the top of your head, you know about streets, if you don't know them, I'll just talk to you later, but you know the streets that are gonna be combined?
Clearly we've got Seventeenth and Eighteenth. Seventeenth, Eighteenth, nineteen, Twentieth, um, and Ninth, and then, um, Morgan and Twenty-Fifth, and, and lastly, it was Fourteenth or Sixteenth, I'm losing one, um, but we have, we'll get all that together.
Right.
Um, and we have some other numbers and some other assumptions that we're making, you know, based on, uh, I called some contractors that we've worked with and look at the area and, and kind of pitched it, um, you know, what would be a, a reasonable, uh, assumption of where we could say, if we were to put these projects together. And, um, another thing I calculated was the, uh, all the street surfacing to be included with each of these projects in that area based on our street index and curbing.
Right.
So, we kind of laid it all out, we're working with this stuff, we wanna, um, we wanna get all the long numbers together, but we'll have something to present to you.
Perfect, thanks.
And, uh, I just wanted to give you an update, the, uh, we had a storm that's coming, the county's reached out with one situation report, so far they're, uh, they're into a partner called, uh, or the, uh, the storm system Nicole, so we'll, we'll date it, uh, keep this updated. Um, and then, as an update for the tower, um, we, uh, we did get a, an application submitted and have, uh, an engineer going to be on it, um, so once we have what, uh, the engineer's comments are on that permit, I will, we'll show it to the applicant, we go from there.
When, when did that, uh, application come in?
Came in a week before the last.
So, that tower, that tower was erected, or the magistrate hearing was about two months ago, and, and-
There was, there was a fine on, for that, for that time, once we got a complete application submitted, I held, I held a fine for now.
Thank you. Hey, Vice Mayor Shirley, do you have a question?
No, I was, I was just gonna clarify the streets, but it's, here are the streets that are going to, um, try to move into this stormwater project, remaining, if anyone's in rest, to be Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Nineteenth, Twentieth, Ninety-three, Twenty-second, Twenty-third, Morgan, and Twenty-Fifth, um, Fourteenth, Sixteenth, Marina, and Belle Isle, Belle Isle Estates.
We did not go as far as to Marina or Belle Isle Estates, we feel, um, there wasn't actual BMPs in our master plan, but there was one for Marina, but we felt like, you know, that's kind of one that, um, isn't really high in demand or what we want to focus on now, and then when we talked about Belle Isle Estates, we kind of felt like this wasn't our BMP, we needed to, uh, the next stage of planning to take place for that.
It would be very nice to have a few years where we can discuss stormwater projects, so, um, I, I hope you're able to work it out and I could do a little on this. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Reefer? Thank you very much, Mr. Reefer. Thank you. And seven, city clerk?
Um, I just have two updates, and one is the appeal that was made for the home to be built with three household floors, and Patty's and I, uh, Mr. Reefer and Mr. Moore were voting at that hearing, and then the update on the satisfaction of leaning for Sixteenth Street and that we did receive the confirmation that it was released and released, so that's complete.
Mr. Changer, I have a, a question about the, the agenda. Um, I noticed that there's no ownership on the agenda items this time, um, most of them I can pick, I can pick out, but, um, I just noticed that there's no ownership on your wagon, the agenda items. That's something we could turn back on in the next, in the next meeting?
Yes.
Any?
Most of them I, I didn't think were, had a sponsor set for, but, definitely, yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Any, uh, questions or comments for, hey?
Yeah, you actually submitted about three weeks ago a resolution presented tonight, um, and you said it's on the only agenda in time, is there a reason why?
Yes, it, it, we wanted to have a discussion of it and discussion has to be on, at the workshop, so it's already on the workshop for November fourteenth, that agenda, it's on there.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor. All right, now we are up to item number eight, which is a public hearing, this is consideration ordinance twenty-two dash zero four, which is a second reading. Mr. Moore, can you review the summary?
Captain, Mr. Mayor, this is ordinance number twenty-two dash zero four, in accordance with the city council, the city of Belle Isle Beach, Florida, in Chapter Thirty, Marine Structures, Activities and Facilities, Article Four Beach, the city's code ordinances for appeal provisions in Section Thirty dash one forty-one, establishing Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone in order to conform to applicable state laws and regulations, replacing the Gulf of Mexico Safety Zone with a vessel exclusion zone designated as a public bathing beach, restricted to manually propelled vessels only, providing for the installation of regulatory markers, providing for the, uh, establishing violations relating to the public bathing beach, establishing the means of enforcement, amending, excuse me, amending Section Thirty dash one forty-two through Thirty dash one forty-four to conform the restrictions applicable within the created vessel exclusion zone, providing for the incorporation of recitals, providing administrative direction of employment disorders, providing for severability, providing for effective dating. This is a second and final reading ordinance, number twenty-two dash zero four, by its title. Uh, as, uh, this, this, this ordinance came before this council on first reading last month, uh, this conforms precisely to what was approved, there was some added language where we were, were, as discussed during the, um, during the consideration that ordinance to conform the remaining provisions, I mean, as much as they made reference to not being able to place the release or other things that just didn't jack the bolt they're doing here, and so we made, I made sure that that got included per the council's direction. Otherwise, this completely informs of what was discussed on this past janitorcy on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Before we start working on this one, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero four? So, motion made by Mike Sable, do I have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Shirley? Mr. Sable, do you have a floor?
We have reviewed that, we've done our due diligence on this issue, obviously we've had multiple hearings, uh, with the people and out and about, and, uh, thank you to everybody involved in this, uh, we have considered many viewpoints and, uh, all came together really nicely, word, and, uh, solid piece of law, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sable, other comments from the council? All right, let's go to the citizens.
All right, let's go to the citizens who would be willing to speak on this topic. Back to the council. Will Mr. Sabal have the last word? Recommend approval. All right. So, let's take a vote. This is to approve the second reading ordinance twenty-two dash zero four. Ms. Chancy, would you please call her over?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye. And so, it passes unanimously six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wish to add that upon this passing of first reading, I did communicate with my contact at W C to make them aware, just moving forward, they, I will promptly make them aware of this passage and we will begin whatever process is necessary on the administrative steps, as messages.
Thank you for staying on topic. Appreciate all your hard work. All right. Now, we are to the consent agenda. It's items nine and ten. As for approval of the September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two final budget, public hearing minutes, and approval of the October tenth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, or the consent agenda passes. All right. Now, we are on to the regular agenda. This is for consideration, item number eleven is for consideration of resolution twenty-two dash zero nine. Mr. Moore, would you please read the summary?
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Get to that page.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is resolution twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution of the city council, city of Bellar Beach, Florida, provided for changes in the general fund, capital projects funds, stormwater fund appropriations to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two annual budget, whereas the city council, the city of Bellar Beach, adopted resolution twenty-twenty-one dash zero nine on Monday, September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, adopting the twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-twenty-two budget, whereas for statute one sixty-six two forty-one sub seven, the governing body of each municipality at any time, within fiscal year, within sixty days following the end of the fiscal year, may amend the budget for that year as follows. If the budget amendment is required for a purpose not specifically authorized, in area F A, in area F A or area F B, the budget amendment must be adopted in the same manner to the original budget unless otherwise specified in the municipality's charter, whereas the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two fiscal year must be amended to reflect bad debt expense, forgiven fines, additional payments of debt principal and interest, and additional storm drain maintenance. Now, therefore, the resolved by the city council of Bellar Beach, Florida, Section One, the city of Bellar Beach, annual budget for the following month shall be amended as described on the attached budget adjustment request as of today, and in Section Two, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption. This is a final reading of resolution twenty-two dash zero nine, in full as a budget resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero nine? Motion made by Leslie Notaro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Standing by Mike Sabal. Leslie, you have a floor?
I think it's self-explanatory. The day's, or the schedule says they're changing it, but I can review and amend the budget. That's what we're doing.
Thank you. Other comments from the council? Let's go to the citizens for comments. Who would like to speak? All right. We're back to council. Will Mr. Notaro have the last word?
I'm with you.
So, this is to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero nine. Ms. Chancy, would you please call her over?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabal?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
So, the resolution passes six to zero. Item twelve, consideration of appointment of park and recreation board member. Before we get started, do I have a motion for the appointment?
So, look.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Shirley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the Roberts. All right. We have only one candidate, and that is Deborah Keith, also known as Debbie Keith. At this, at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Keith if she would like to introduce herself to the council.
Debbie Keith, one on Nine Harbor. One on Nine Harbor Drive. We've had a house here for like twenty years, and we've been part of the Plexton Report in the past, and I'm really happy to be part of the team again.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Keith?
This is in the video, but I just noticed, Patty, that the subject says, boy, we've been alternating member to member. Is that important? Did we change that or?
Thank you. I did change it from the last time I did that. Thank you, Moore. I'm sorry. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Since we only have one candidate, we need to do a roll call with her. Patty?
You would like to roll a call with us?
Let's do a roll call with her.
All right. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Notaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
I'm sorry, I'm not Sabal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
So, it's passing unanimously, and congratulations, Ms. Keith. Thank you for all the period of work. Now, we're on to item thirteen, consideration of change order options on the twelfth street, thirteenth street, and Bay Drive stormwater project. Do I have a motion to proceed? Motion made by Frank Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Notaro. Mr. Reefer, would you like to explain this to us?
Okay. So, it all started, if you get onto the background, there are, there is a pipe we discovered, I mentioned it, two council meetings ago, it was a fifteen-inch elliptical RCP pipe that was discovered, that was not indicated on the survey or previous engineering plans when the design was done. The sense, the discovery of this pipe, we determined that there were two options in the water base done with that, that it's directly underneath the curb on the north side of twelfth street, and there's only so much room to work with. I camered that pipe, and I sent the link to each of the council members to show the condition of the pipe at the time that we discovered what it looked like inside. So, the engineer has come up with two possible options we can do with the situation. Option one involves removing the, it's a hundred and twelve linear feet of the existing fifteen-inch RCP, and that involves a cost of three thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And now, part option, we refer to install a twelve-inch C nine hundred PDC for the estimated cost of fourteen thousand dollars, fourteen, fourteen thousand forty dollars. So, that would be a total, total estimated cost of seventeen thousand five hundred and eight dollars. The other option is to solely just remove the pipe and you have to place anything back. The engineer, Duel and Associates, which is now under Seppi Incorporated, their recommendation was to, to do option one and to remove the pipe and replace it with a pipe, which is a twelve-inch pipe, and that is for the, the, the main chain character of the city underground stormwater demands. I do have the engineer, Alan Carrier, who made the recommendation, or his, his firm is, and he's here to answer questions specifically for this recommendation. And then I put together the numbers of where we're at in the project. This can be paid for on the temporary contingency budget that we're in line for the project. Current emergency balance is forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This will put us at a contingency balance of twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars. And speaking with the engineer, sleep program project, do not anticipate as far as the contingency budget for that cannot be guaranteed because we do not know exactly what's in there. We ran into a lot of conflicts with lateral service lines. We want to cover it. So, that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, Mr. Carrier's here to answer any questions you have, and I included the proximity pipe location, which is probably easier to see in the digital document, but the rules recommendation for this, for this, these options, and then the two proposals that were presented by the construction company.
All right. Sir, would you like to give Mr. Mayor the beginning?
Hi, I'm Alan Carrier with Seppi Incorporated. We were Duel and Associates, and were purchased by Seppi back in March of this past year. We did notice the, the Duel and Associates at the time took over the project from your, your former engineering firm, kind of midstream. The survey had already been done by a local surveyor, and he did not pick up the extra pipe that was in the ground. The system drains through, it's called the CDS unit, and you guys had pulled a permit from Swift Mud, I think about twenty years ago. When we reevaluated the system, we're looking at getting rid of the CDS unit, but there was still some life to the, I guess you received some great dollars at the time from Swift Mud, and there was still some life left in that CDS unit. So, we, the district Swift Mud would not allow us to remove it. All the planes that we had seen did not show that extra pipe. It's a, it's a parallel pipe to the CDS unit that takes water out of the C one. When we discovered the extra pipe, we didn't want to, we didn't want to go through a process of removing the pipe and then finding out that the system didn't have the capacity to take all the water through the CDS unit. So, looking at it, we're thinking, it's there for a reason. Let's not upset the apple cart. We're just going to leave the pipe, or the integrity of the pipe, it conveys through the pipe. Let's leave it there and leave it intact. The existing pipe, I believe you all looked at it, as Kyle mentioned, it's in pretty poor shape. It's got lateral cracking. You can see the, the joints are displaced slightly, and then there's rebar showing through the pipe. When the pipe was actually set years ago, they used to call them lift holes, they would leave a little pocket of concrete up from the top of the pipe, expose the rebar, and they'd use that to grab the pipe and locate it, and then use it, contractor would come back and patch that pipe, that hole. Almost all those lift holes are either deteriorated or separated to fall in. So, it's our recommendation to go ahead and remove the pipe. We're downsizing it slightly to a twelve-inch pipe. The pipe that's in the ground is an elliptical pipe, and there's only about four inches of cover, which is probably another reason why the pipe's cracking. There's not enough bedding on top of the pipe to securely protect the pipe from traffic. The curve that it does go on is only about four inches in thickness. We're typically between seven and nine. So, our recommendation, let's, let's put a new pipe, in the C nine hundred pipe. It's a twelve-inch pipe, it'll give us added cover over the, the pipe that we're proposing, and we'll still have that conveyance, the, the secondary routing for the water if we...
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Yes, sir. You're going to remove the concrete pipe and put a PDC pipe in there, C nine, C nine. And you're only going to have four inches of overlay on top?
No. The reason why we're putting the twelve-inch C nine hundred pipe is because the existing pipe only had four inches of cover. With the C nine hundred, we'll have about eight and a half inches of cover.
Because you have three inches of outside diameter only.
Plus, plus the bells and pipe.
Okay. And here's a strange question for you. Why can't we use C nine pipe for total range?
You can't, but it's, it's expensive. It's a more expensive option to just using concrete pipe.
It's more expensive than concrete pipe today?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm not aware of that, but I'm not buying quite the relationship here.
Mr. Sabal?
Yeah, I noticed, we worked through the estimates, prices not include paltry removal and replacement. Are you looking at paltry removal and replacement?
No.
There are none?
No. So, it's always in the road we're on with the curb?
Ken? I had, I had a question, and it's probably dumb, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What happens if we did not?
My gut's telling me that you're going to have street flooding upstream in that CDS unit. So, that, that CDS unit works, it's called a centrifugal deflection device. So, what, the stormer gets in there and spins, and the solids remove themselves from the flow, the flow stream, and settle into the bottom of the, the sump. That creates what they call head loss, right? So, it takes energy to, to remove those, those particles out of that stormwater stream. The system is so shallow and so flat that I believe that during bigger storm wrecks, it's going to back the water up into the, into the streets upstream of that CDS unit. What makes me kind of think maybe that secondary pipe was there for a reason? Maybe it was part of the original design? Maybe it was an afterthought, because it's not on the original planes, but somebody might have gone out there and put that in at the same time, thinking, we're going to have issues. They might have sawed the issues during the construction. I, I don't know. It's just my gut. It's just from what I've seen from experience.
So, in your opinion, removing it entirely is, is maybe a safer way than leaving it at a distance?
Yes. You don't want to leave that existing pipe there. You're going to be putting in new curbs, new asphalt. I don't know what the life left is in that pipe. With construction activity around it, there's obviously more damage that's being done to it, heavy equipment going over, and not being compacted on all sides. It's been exposed. So, my suggestion is get rid of the old pipe, put in a new pipe.
And even if it was plugged, eventually the street would start, it would start sagging, is that right?
You could, you could plug it typically. My recommendation is never to leave a pipe in the street, even if, never bait it. We always flow, we'll fill it. We can't remove it. So, that is an option. Not my recommendation. My recommendation is get it out of there and put in a new pipe.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Sabal? I do love, I really don't know you. Are you a, where's your degree from? You have a professional engineer? Want you back? I mean, can you give us a brief synopsis? Because you're saying a lot of, my belief is, you will do that in a second. I don't know you. I don't know your qualifications. Can you briefly go over that?
Um, graduated from University of South Florida. Been in the business almost thirty years now. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. I'm also a registered land surveyor in the state of Florida. Purchased Duel and Associates from Seafreight Duel back in two thousand and six, and we recently just sold the company back in March. I've worked for the city of Clearwater for almost ten years. I was their assistant director of engineering, oversaw stormwater and environmental management section. I was with a couple of private firms before that, with Telsberg County for a short stint. Honestly, I didn't like to drive, so I left Telsberg County, went to Clearwater, and then was at Clearwater for ten years, and then at Duel and Associates since two thousand and six.
Okay. So, your P is still current?
Yes.
Okay. Before I go to the citizens, any other comments? Yes.
Kyle, last time we talked a little bit about the possibility of errors and emissions insurance. Did anybody, did you get an opportunity to speak with anybody about that?
I spoke to the city attorney, and I spoke with Allen, and it didn't, based on what happened and the way the contract was transferred, it didn't seem like it would fall under the errors and emissions.
You guys had errors and emissions insurance?
Yes.
Did you have an opportunity to talk with the insurance company?
No. But it wouldn't, in my opinion, it wouldn't qualify for errors and emissions. The error wasn't done on behalf of our work, our expertise. It was, the pipe wasn't seen by the surveyor. We relied on that information. There was no atlases. You, you guys didn't have any atlases of what was in the ground at the time. We just had it discovered during construction.
Is that something you could take a moment and contact your insurance company and see what they say?
Sure.
Any great answers?
To be blunt, what, what would you... To be blunt, what, what would you be looking for?
We look, for the insurance company to cover the cost, uh, what we have to do now because we weren't aware of that.
Again, in my experience, um, just because the pipe wasn't there or wasn't seen in the forefront, um, even if it was, okay, let's go back. If it was seen, we would recommend that you remove or replace it. See, you would have incurred that cost anyway. Um, this isn't something that's above and beyond, and I don't want to talk them, you know, um...
The fact that this is a change order, you're saying you don't think the change order cost had this been inclusive of the original contract bid? Your, your, your feeling is it would be the exact same cost then as it is now?
No, for what, I understand where you're getting at now. If it was on the plans originally, then the cost would have been more in line with the other prices that were on the, on the big sheet at the original time of, of, um...
So, what we would want to pursue then would be the delta. So, if you were able to say, it was five dollars initially and now it's eight because it's a change order because we didn't know about it, then we'd like three dollars back?
And to the extent legal was asked to confer with the city manager on this, um, my insight wasn't that it's impossible to pursue those sorts of things under certain, under street circumstances. It was factually understanding that, and, and as I have understood and explained here as well, the engineer whom you're speaking assumed the project based on project, based on work performed by a different company, a different entity that surveyed it, not theirs. And so, their insurer is unlikely to insure the work of a third party. And so, were we to pursue that, it's not that it could possibly never be pursued, we'd be pursuing it against another entity, um, and then the, the resources expended in that regard, um, to identify, pursue and potentially make legal claims against that was not, at least as we initially discussed it, not where we thought the resources were best allocated to identify that form or form or form of surveyor whose work was done, submitted claim to them, have to pursue it, um, the amount of resources allocated at that time seemed as, as, which is a cost benefit analysis at that time.
Well, because sometimes, as we know with insurance companies, and we all love them, would be, um, you know, you, you filed with your insurance company, typically they didn't say, well, that's not our deal. They would go after the other insurance company. We don't care if they go after it, just as long as we get some money back.
I swear I couldn't.
I think the byline is how many hours would it take your firm to, uh, address this matter if you had a good word?
I didn't quantify it. It was in excess of just going forward was, was my initial impression, Steve, you look at that.
So, the question is, yes?
I just, yeah, I haven't had a chance to speak and thank you, Mr. Carrier, for providing all this information. I don't, I don't know how anyone can have any liability when the city itself doesn't have documentation once in the ground. There's, there lies the problem. Um, I've been in your shoes many times, trying to construct something with no documentation from the city, and it always goes back in the contractor, and, uh, you know, there's, there's no way I foresee this. Um, but, uh, my question is, along the lines with Kyle, we got the money and a contingency fund are ready. We haven't, we still have remaining twenty, nearly twenty-seven thousand dollars in that fund. Um, does that budget also include our paving and have we got numbers for paving to complete this project?
Yes, uh, all anticipated on the third book. And then twenty, twenty-six, that would be after we get option two.
Right, after we put, after we go forward, replace the pipe, keep the storm system running as it was, more efficiently with a smaller pipe, possibly. And, uh, so we still have nearly twenty-seven thousand dollars sitting there for other errors, other, we should have uncovered anything else that might come up at this point. Would you agree, Mr. Carrier, anything else?
At, at least on the one side.
Unless there's a major increase in the price of something, right?
Right. So, the, the north side of the, the project, um, with the contractor has gone out and has verified survey. Uh, we had some issues with the survey on the south side. The invert elevations of the, the invert, the elevations of the pipes and the inlets and stuff were a little bit different. Um, this, the contractors get different information that was actually done in the survey. We went back and we checked, um, I just found out from Tina, our construction inspector this afternoon, that she got verification that the information they got from the contractor doing their survey is pretty consistent with what, um, the surveyor has. There's a little, there's a few nuances, little differences, but it looks like it's something we can deal with. And you have a little more fall, if you will, on that side of this, this street. Um, so we have a little more play to get the pipes in the ground and we've come across some conflicts. Um, but I, we're not, we're not anticipating another conflict like this.
Any other questions for Mr. Carrier?
One more follow-up. So, the, uh, the, we had the pipes video, right? So, in my mind, I feel the whole understanding when I look at you, it is right around inside the place. How in the world they have not seen the other pipe?
I, I can't, uh, um, so we, they had to go in a tall street. They were only able to get into manholes on the south side of the street. And they looked, they had the cross pipes, they were so full of sediment, they couldn't get over that way. They couldn't pull the grates on the north side of the street because they were afraid that they would just crumble.
Right.
And we weren't at that point yet when we were removing the boxes of the structure, so that's pretty much all that happened.
So, the, the video equipment never accidentally in that area?
It never, no. And, and to their knowledge, they thought that it was only cross pipes. So, they looked down each of those pipes. And they saw the sediment, but they never, they didn't want to go down in the pipe because it'd move the grade because it's falling hard.
Okay. All right, uh, we've heard Mr. Carrier's, uh, opinion and his recommendation. Mr. Reefer, what is your recommendation?
I support the engineer's decision.
All right, before we get into a vote, we need to take this to the citizens. Would anyone like to comment on this? All right, I'm going to come back to Frank Baker for the last word, and then we'll take it over.
Yeah, I, um, I agree, uh, I went out and looked at that job before, you know, and some of it was called virtual collapse. I mean, you couldn't see that, I mean, it was just full of debris, uh, top concrete area like that, so it was actually cool.
All right, uh, so Patty, what we're going to do is we're going to take a roll call vote and council, you're going to have to vote for option one, uh, which is, uh, complete removal and replacement at seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and eighteen cents, or option two, which is removal only at the cost of thirty-four hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. Patty, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
One.
Councilmember Matero?
Option one.
Councilmember Roberts?
Option one.
Councilmember Zabel?
Option one.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Option one.
Mayor Gaddis?
Option one. So, uh, option one, uh, had six votes, options two had none. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed with option number one. And, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Carrier. All right, we're on to number fourteen. This is to authorize the emergency manager to execute assignment and assumption agreement with innovation. Before we begin, do I have a motion to authorize? So, motion made by Lieutenant Matero, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Baker. Mr. Reefer?
So, uh, this, this, uh, execution of the assignment assumption agreement with innovation was, uh, based on the fact that, uh, Train System Corporation has recently purchased SEPI Engineering Construction Incorporated. Uh, this is very similar to what happened with SEPI Engineering purchase and Duell and Associates in, uh, two thousand, uh, June twenty-twenty-two, it's earlier this year. Um, the original engineering service agreement was as early as signed, executed September sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and, uh, so requesting, uh, let's see, include the, the notification email from SEPI and the data that was, uh, given this information and their letter of end to bring them, uh, the deal, the city attorney has reviewed all this information. Uh, and then, that being said, as we discussed in the prior meeting, I'm very close to advertising and, uh, putting the RFQ out for engineering services. Now, I plan to be advertised, uh, to go on paper on November sixteenth, which is what's that. We're going to get about less time.
Thank you, Mr. Reefer. Uh, next time you speak, would you mind giving a little closer to my guest, the star over there? All right, the motion was made by Lieutenant Matero. Would you like to open the discussion?
I think it's pretty clear. It was just a, um, one company worrying with another company about the other company. I think it's just a very simple technicality.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the council? Uh, let's go to the citizens. If you'd like to speak on this topic. All right, so we'll go back to the council. I think we can just do this with a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Reefer, we're authorized to move forward with your agreement. Thank you. All right, we are now on to number fifteen. This is consideration of the procedure to fill the vacant city council seat. We'll begin on the emotion.
Motion?
Motion made by Mike Zabel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Lloyd Roberts. All right, I'll put this one in with, with the help of Patty. Uh, the procedure document you have in front of you is pretty much the same format that was used the last time there was a vacancy to fill. Um, council has a right to select a replacement member just by any way we seek fit to. So, I always agree on the method. I'm asking for approval of this method to be used on the November, on, uh, November twenty-eighth, whenever we elect a replacement council member, uh, for vice mayor government. Counsel?
Motion.
Uh, well, we've already, uh, we've made the motion to approve it, and now we're just going to have a little discussion about it. Is everyone on the same page?
As a technical matter, Mr. Mayor, we made the motion to have the discuss, please get it on the table for discussion. The number maker is moving to approve the motion.
Just moving straight on. Okay, all right. I apologize. Uh, there's a motion on the table to, uh, to approve this. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Lloyd Roberts. I think we can just do it all in favor. All in favor?
Mayor, before we do that, did we go to public comment?
Apologies, I'm... No, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry, this, this one counted, uh, got a little weird. Citizens? Yes, sir?
I'm a little confused. If you already have a procedure of replacing and appointing a city council member, why does it even have to be discussed again? If it's a valid standing instruction or policy procedure in a current city? Look, I don't understand why you're even having to have the discussion to vote on it.
Mayor, I think I can, if you'd like.
Be my guest.
The, your charter sets forth that the city council, um, council, yes, sorry, it's a, it's a, the city council has the ability to determine how it will fill the vacancy. Under past administration, they, they selected a policy during a precise vacancy. It was not established as a standard policy, it's not codified as a resolution or ordinance. That composition of the council having changed, this council had its love and its discretion to determine how it wishes to proceed. Um, you've said, you've recognized that there was nothing that was problematic for your purposes about that procedure and you wish to endorse it for this instance, but it was not a standard codified policy in your ordinance as a resolution. It was an informal series of documents adopted by a previous council to proceed and, um, brought forth again. So, um, had you folks decided by way of example that you just wish to do it by drawing lots or taking, uh, you know, picking names out of a hat and ignoring that prior proceeding, you could have done as much as well. And the fact that you, that the policy holds this early in your destruction.
Thank you for clarifying that, boys.
Yeah, clears it for me too. I mean, I, I was just a little confused about how it went.
Yeah?
Learned something tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, uh, I'm a little confused about the procedure here because we have a motion to approve the procedure, but then we moved right over to...
The, it's actually, it is, and forgive me, I'm, I'm doing a lot of lecturing on parliamentary procedure that you're not speaking, I mean, like traveling and speaking and educating. Um, the way you folks operate as a body, you move to discuss something in the first place, which is perfectly valid within Robert's rules and a way to do things. You place it on the proverbial table for discussion. This kind of came up when I just transitioned here, when you guys wanted to say, motion. So, you said, we're writing about this issue, motion, second, and what you're saying is, we agree that we still want to take this up because it has happened in my tender here where you get to an item and it dies to lack of a motion saying, which is functionally the body saying, we don't even want to talk about this, much less decide on a proposed solution. So, what you've done is, the original motion was, we want to talk about this. And then you said, okay, now that we're talking about it, I come up with a proposed procedure that I think works. And then my banker said, yeah, me too, so I'm going to move to just use this method. And so, it went from a discussion to a proposed solution. Um, and so, the, the motion on the floor as it stands now is to endorse the solution you brought forward.
All right, so we had a, a motion to approve the method made by Frank Baker. Do we have a second?
I'm on the second.
Lloyd Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got a, a plan here and we will, uh, we'll take care of this on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, is that a special city council meeting?
That will be a special city council meeting. Date, was that again? I'm sorry, date again? Uh, November the twenty-eighth. It is the last Monday before our regular council meeting. Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Uh, so Patty, is that the date? Will that be the first day that we receive the names and the resumes, or will we get that ahead of time?
Yes, Patty, Jim, and Patty, with all the names and applications, we'll go out to you on Wednesday.
Okay.
This one's in.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, and what we're doing is we're working around... I have your certification.
Thank you, thank you so much.
You deserve...
Appreciate that.
All right, item sixteen, unfinished business. We have the unfinished business. I don't see that we were unsuccessful in having a work session this month. Uh, we're going to make it for, for last month, we're going to make it for this month with special meetings and work sessions, but, uh, we'll, we'll get caught back up. I don't really think we're that far behind. I think we're doing pretty well. All right.
Then what we're talking about, the sessions and meetings, can you just publicly tell us because generally it's all on the last page of the current...
Okay, so, uh, next Monday is our work session. And then we won't have another one until the twenty-eighth, uh, which is the special council meeting whenever we elect, uh, landowner replacement.
All at six p.m., correct?
Yes. All right, item seventeen, council comments. I had so much fun using the computer generator random order last month. I did again. So, uh, this month, we start off with council member Roberts. You have the floor.
All right. So, just, um, kind of a humorous comment here that, uh, getting going back to that in the Saturday night prior to Halloween, um, one, one of the deputies, um, who was, to me, who, uh, he was, oh, there's too many people there in the parking lot on Nineteenth Street. And of course, many of the youngsters these days don't seem to have been, I'm starting to say it, haven't been raised properly. And so, one guy came up with a police officer and said, uh, hey, I'm going on the beach. And the deputy said, nobody's going on the beach. Uh, we're shutting this down, party's over, go home. At which point, the young man said, hey, I know my rights, I can go on the beach, and I'm just going to walk past you. And our one deputy said, uh, say that again. At which point, the young man thought otherwise and turned around with his friend and they left. So, again, I just want to praise the, uh, deputies that were out there that night. Uh, I'm not sure how I would have responded, it was just overwhelming. You see, I don't know, a hundred people, but it seemed like three to four hundred people. You see, I don't know how many people, but it seemed like three to four hundred people just walking around there completely out of control. And it was within thirty minutes, they were all gone. So again, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Alright, let's move to Councilmember Baker.
Just briefly, I have a see, according to twenty-two oh four buoys, keeping buoys, I think it's the safety item. A year ago, this council voted six to one to put a few buoys in. If Beller Shores approved from like First Street to Seventeen, but they're like Seventeenth Street, Beller Shores. I'm wondering if this council would do that now because I went over to talk to Beller Shores. The mayor there was very gracious about the offer. He wanted to wait till after the election, the election was in there since March. I wonder if this council would be willing to do the same if they were willing to have it installed.
I'm going to respond to that because I think that I may have picked up on, I may have got a different message. And I remember whatever you presented it, I think that they were more worried about maintenance of the heat. Because once there's a buoy out there, it's no longer, it's no longer our, we're not paying for it, they will be paying for it. And so this council would have to, I believe, to get them to agree to that, if they would even do it at all, would be to agree to assume maintenance of the heat on those buoys also.
We have, we actually still have an interloable agreement, making installing from First Street to Beller's. It's never been removed by unit board. And we were always the city that installed, maintained, replaced. And I just think that people from First Street to Twenty-first Street deserve the same protection as Twenty-first Street did at Beller's.
There's another, something else to consider on that also. They would have to go through the same permitting process they will have to.
Yes. Perry has a point of order. We should have discussed this during council comments, that this should be reserved as a mandatory working session.
I'm here for that. You okay, Patty?
I'm fine, I just have, that's my comments, that's all of my comments.
Would you like to make any more?
Thanks to all the veterans, Veterans Day. I remember one senator saying about staying for the National Anthem, coming over to Beller's Cemetery. Cemetery, I'll show you four hundred thousand pieces of statues standing.
Thank you. Mr. Zabel?
Oh, okay. On that topic, just want to go out there, Master Chief, happy Veterans Day. People kind of tend to forget that there's Memorial Day. And that's for our following, Veterans Day, for all those guys who live around. I also want to point out, he recently was elected to a national office for the Mabel Reserve Association. So, Master Chief, congratulations. That's all I know.
Thank you. Pleasantly, Matero.
No damage.
Vice Mayor Shirley?
Just once again, thank everyone for attending the meetings. We really appreciate the participation and definitely appreciate what our citizens are doing, rallying together and stepping up to serve on boards and assisting council and city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone, our next work session is on Monday, November fourteenth. I'd also like to remind everyone that the Parking Rec Board is hosting a chili cook-off on Saturday, November nineteenth, between noon and two P.M. I wasn't kidding whenever I said I would bring my chili. However, I will only be there to, as an exhibit, not as a, a committee. But I will be serving chili that day, so.
Just checking to view as an exhibit? Let's see here, November twenty-eighth, we'll have a special council meeting to elect a council member replacement link guy. If you haven't applied and want to, you need to do it by Wednesday, is that correct, Patty?
Yes, that's right.
Alright. And also, we're expecting another storm. It's not going to be like Ian, but still, they're predicting possible fifty mile per hour dust. So if you've got anything loose in your yard, you might want to tie it down or bring it inside. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us tonight. And do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion? Yes.
Just one more thank you for the Parks and Rec Committee. I don't know how many people there had a chance to attend, but they did a great job. And the judges were extremely intelligent, had a lot of wisdom as a result of awarding the first prize to my granddaughter, LaHee. So it was a great time, thanks, thanks for the community.
Duell Fountains donated to Nelson County Shutter. And the first prize got to be back to Nelson County Shutter. We were very thankful. If anybody needs a dog, we're about fifty right now, please, please. I mean, some of those have been in there for months and just carry it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Frank Baker, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think so. Alright, get out of here, everyone.